I think that's the one change and we're gonna pull that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Jefferson County Board of Commissioners Regular Session Agenda. Today is Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, approximately six P M. If you would all stand for your prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for all of your many blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to gather and conduct county business. Lord, we ask for your guidance. We ask for your will to be done. We ask all of this in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its
The agenda, are there any changes that need to be made in council groups?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe we did have one change. We're pulling out of the five. Agreement between the county and the chamber of five.
Any other change?
No, no worries.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Okay.
So, you Commissioner Bramling and Commissioner Hall, any discussion before I call two of them? All favor raise your right hand, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. We're all moving on with the agenda. Public announcements, presentations, and awards. I have and then Gray come up and present for that.
Evening, Lynn McGrady, five three seven zero one road. I'm here tonight just to let y'all know there is a fund drive going on at this time by Army Strong of Tallahassee. They are raising money for the U.S. Army Memorial Monument in the National Cemetery in Tallahassee. The Army does not yet have one, and the class of from Leon nineteen sixty-eight has taken that home. We have a local guy here, a resident off of what does he say?
Byrne, Burns Houston.
Bronze red, bronze red. Disabled veteran whose helicopter was shot down in Vietnam. And he has since he was nineteen, twenty years old, he's been paralyzed, put the waist down. He is the second, what is he called? He's called the Vice Chairman of this It is, let's see. It says our goal was to raise funds for the U.S. Army Memorial Monument to be placed in the Tallahassee National Cemetery memorial walkway. The monument will be the actual cast size bronze replica of the Battlefield Cross using the Vietnam-era boots, helmet, dog tags, and M sixteen, which I'm sure you've all seen. Be this funeral home, I believe it is. They're doing the granite that will be at the base of it. And they're working with FSU is gonna do the bronze monument, or at least have some part in that. They are circulating this brochure to ask individuals and businesses to donate to the production of this memorial monument to ensure that all men and women veterans of the U.S. Army who perished will be remembered by everyone. And will you help is the question. Does not matter what the donation is. There is a schedule, donation schedule in here. If you are interested in donating that either personally through your business or through the commission, if that's possible, and I don't know that. May I leave this week?
Absolutely.
Two, two lucky tickets.
You can leave.
Okay. And thank you very much.
You want the pass, pass over Bush White. So bring, bring it up.
Oh, okay, I will. And I have on here Steve's phone number. If you need that or if donations are gathered, I'm gonna be helping him do this here in Jefferson and also with at our Valor Dinner, we hope. And it's a little tough for him. He's, over the years, has his condition with neuropathy and his diabetes has worsened. He has now had both legs amputated below the knee and will have to have the right one done above the knee in a short period of time. And people just don't realize what Vietnam veterans went through and the the horrible conditions that they were treated to when they came back. The least we can do is honor those that died and gave their all for, for our livelihood and our safety.
So absolutely, well said, Ms. Gray. Okay, Ms. Lynn.
Does have to go get that one.
You already have, already have one, roll one, ladies.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you guys. And girl.
Chairman, Angela Gray, your property appraiser, offices forty West Walnut. I'm here tonight because we have closed our books for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, and we are ready for our annual audit. And it's my pleasure to present to the board two checks that represent the total of unspent funds from our past fiscal year totaling forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. A portion of these funds are being returned because we surplus the vehicle that was no longer in use. And then a portion of it is also the additional funds you gave me for legal fees that we did not use in the last fiscal year. But I'm glad to present this check and I'll give it to your manager and your clerk.
Okay, thank you for that. Right. Ms. Maddie, how's that factoring into our push this year?
Well, right now, it'll probably just be deposited into contingency until you all decide what you would like to do with it.
Oh. Any other public announcements, presentations, awards? Moving on to citizens' requests and input or non-agenda items, so everybody wants to speak on something that's on the agenda tonight? Online? Going to move to consent agenda and entertain a motion to approve consent?
We do have someone, sorry.
Okay. Oh, somebody wants to speak?
Yes, Ms. Cindy. Go ahead, Ms. Cindy. Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can we get an update and a, Brent, turn that off for echoing. An update and a timeline and contact information for the person that's handling everybody in the county getting the fast access internet.
Can you repeat the question, ma'am, one more time?
Um, an update and like a timeline and contact information for the person that's handling everybody in the county getting the fast asset access internet. So that we want to find out when we're gonna get it. How can we do that?
The Tri-County is actually one of those, that internet, it's not a, it's not guaranteed for everybody in the county, but they're doing their best. They're doing their best to get to where they can do it. They're still taking care of the Tri-County members now, getting the last few lines ran. And they've got two more, two more stages of this.
So, our neighbors on the same road have Duke, and they have had that internet for over a year. So
If your, if your house is within five hundred feet of Tri-County line, of a Tri-County fiber line, then they're able to hook it up without any running any more lines. So that's probably how they got it.
Okay, so.
Hey, real quick, Cindy, so these are for I, I would like, can we, can we get this put as an agenda item for the next meeting as a broadband discussion update? Cindy, this, we're gonna go ahead and put this on as an agenda item for the next meeting for an update.
Okay, good, because I, I mean, I kinda wanna know what happened to when Steve Walker had it arranged for everybody to get it also.
There was, there was no guarantees to that. There was, there were some hopes that, that we're gonna get everybody, you know, private industry is by private industry, and we can encourage all we want. But we cannot make private industry do, do those side things.
So it was not understanding that there was supposed to be a grant. Anyway, if it's gonna be on the agenda, I, we can discuss it then, but then
Yeah, let's, let's do that. So we'll cut the back and forth on, on this, this portion, and we'll have a full-blown agenda item update. Let's, let's go ahead and play for it at the evening meeting, so it's not in the morning meeting. So it'll be the second meeting in November, and we will have an update. Sound good?
Yes, that's great.
Thank you, Cindy.
So the second question is about two months ago, I requested an agenda item of the county manager ignoring county laws. And I've not heard anything else about that. What is the status of that?
I, I don't even know how to approach that, that question there. We are, we are doing everything we can. All right, thank you, Cindy.
What did you say?
So we're, we're doing everything we can. I, I, I don't quite know how to answer that question.
Yeah, and just further on that note, I mean, there's, the, the county manager prepares the agenda. There's a mechanism for like commissioners to put items on the agenda, for the county attorney to put stuff on the agenda, but there's been a mechanism for citizens to just ask them on the agenda. There's a citizen comment period at the beginning of every meeting. That's the citizen's chance to come in and speak on anything that they wanna speak on, but there's no ability to formally add an item to the agenda.
So then when a citizen has an issue that needs to be addressed and has proof, how does that get addressed?
Come, come to the meeting and present.
Why does that, why do we have to be there in person? Or why do I have to be there in person?
I mean, you don't, you, it's probably pretty hard to present stuff via the internet.
No, actually, it would be easier.
Okay, where is it?
Uh, well, the county manager has a copy of it. I have it. If it's on the agenda, I can put it on the screen, and then everybody can see it.
No, I don't know.
This is not the time for, for that.
When is? Because we've been dealing with this since twenty twenty-three.
Council.
Yeah, again, this, this really isn't the time for a question and answer period. It's on the purpose of public comment. Everybody gets to come in and speak your, your three minutes during the public comment. But, you know, that's, that, that's all that period is for. It's not the time for a back and forth between the board and, and the citizens. If the board wants to take action on something that's presented on public comment, it's entirely up to their discretion. But otherwise, again, you know, your opportunity to present issues of concern to you before the board is during the public comment period.
So, so when is it? You all have not answered my question.
What's your question?
Fine, if you don't wanna do it here, so when is it? And
Cindy, what, what is the question? Point blank, ask, ask me a direct question.
So you have a county manager that thinks she can do whatever she
No, 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 I'm gonna cut it off. I'm gonna cut it off. You cut it off.
You asked me a question.
Cut it off.
So
Well, I asked you a question, and you proceeded to attack the county manager. That's not gonna happen. Thank you. Moving on. Any other citizens' input and request on that agenda items? Thank you. Moving on, I approve a motion to approve consent agenda. Moving on. Thank you, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner White. Any discussion on consent agenda before I call two of them? All favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Moving on, general business. I may administrative rollback, Ms. Maddie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the agenda item states, we are able to make an administrative rollback on top of the rollback that you already did. It would go from seven point six five two to seven point five two six for our rollback. That means that we would have had an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our budget, which I feel like our budget's pretty comfortable. I think everybody, our, our contingency is healthy with a little extra than we normally have. So the extra funds I didn't feel were needed. And as we had discussed before, you were in agreement. So we went ahead and did that administrative rollback saving our taxpayers those funds.
Really, really good show.
And I wanna thank the property appraiser as well for helping make this happen as, you know, she's the one that appraises the properties.
Let's know how cheap you are.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to commend you and this board, either county manager, for the great job you're doing for the citizens. This is the second time since I've been in office for, for sixteen years that the commission has rolled back the rate, the second time. The last time it was done was in twenty sixteen under Commissioner Walker's leadership. So I commend each and every one of you. Thank you for doing what you can to save our taxpayers money.
You said the first time it was rolled back as a tax cuts, second time.
Second time.
What about back to back years when we rolled back?
Back, back years, that's the first time I've seen back to back years. I go back to twenty fifteen or no, twenty thirteen on this chart. That's the first time I've seen this, since twenty thirteen. So it might be the first time in a while.
I mean, in the face of increased insurance, F R S, project costs, I mean, it, it's really a testament to the county staff, all the constitutionals, this board, really give yourselves around, well, it's missing. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ed. Wonderful. We, we had a vote on that, correct?
No, no vote. It's, that was initially processed and decided just for our great focus.
Great, great job. All right, item being Florida Commerce MOU.
So I think you all are somewhat familiar with this MOU. It's basically stating that we'll be a partner with Florida Commerce when it comes to grants and various economic development opportunities that the state might find in this area, the, kind of passing along to us. And, and so this MOU just establishes that partnership. And then on top of the partnership will be, the next agenda item is to create an Economic Development Committee, and that partnership will really be with that committee, not with myself.
That was gonna be the question, soon to the point of contact for, is that gonna be just your chair of economic team?
It's whatever you guys would like. I didn't know, we can talk about it in, in a minute if you would like. But I, I figured if you needed a staff person, you know, that was everyday kind of a thing to, to be a point of contact. The planning department could potentially be that contact, Mr. Wheeler.
There, there won't be any conflict with, with that, with their sorry, with, with David, our planner, being the point of contact for Commerce.
As far as staff goes, and he is getting an assistant. She starts in a couple, on the twenty-seven, so he's not operating by himself either.
I don't see any issues with that. I know, like, the delegation and Commerce sort of requested this committee. I don't, I think, I think he's gonna have to have some staff person, like, to assist him, like, planning, planning out of agendas and advertising meetings and that sort of stuff. So you're gonna have somebody to help staff it up.
All right. Do we need to point, point that person now, or?
Yeah, so that's the, and we're, so as Shannon mentioned, the next item is gonna be standing up this committee. And so we set it up to where there are the three representatives, one, the county commissioner, one city commissioner, it'll be appointed by the city of Los Alamos, one member from the business community of the board to represent, and then a staff person to be designated by the county manager. So Shannon will have discretion to designate that staff person. That's at least how we set up a resolution. If the board wants to go ahead and dictate that as part of, as part of the process tonight, that's certainly within your discretion.
But as far as the MOU goes, I, they were, needed it yesterday, so I went ahead and assigned it. And so we're asking the board to go ahead and ratify that signature, solidifying that partnership.
But you need a motion to ratify the MOU.
Yes.
Motion from Commissioner Bramling, second from Commissioner White. Any further discussion or a call to vote from the board, audience, online?
Hang on a second, Mr. Chairman. Well, we have, there's a second part of this BMOU as well, which is appointing a representative to the State Economic Development Advisory Committee. So as part of that, we would ask the board to
Is that typically a, a board member?
So we have it in here as the county manager. I think it can really be anybody, though. So it could be, it could be a board member if you wanna go that route. This person would just sort of sit on, it's an advisory council that Commerce has set up. I don't know how often they need
So what I would like to see, sorry, Commissioner, what I'd like to see is whoever, I would, I would like to see the whoever's the chair of the task force, which I would like to see somebody from this board also be that point of contact or that, that appointee as well.
Those meetings are important.
Really?
They're that council.
And, and just to jump, jump the shark here, I was going to ask to be the chair of the Economic Development Task Force. I, I think it's kind of where it's set, where chairman is, that position in there.
So I think that I, personally, I think we'll have to make that economic level board. I think whoever the chairman, I mean, I think it makes a change every year, would be my suggestion. I think whoever chairman the board is, the chairman of this board, I think needs to be the chairman of that board, just to keep it just to keep it separate. I mean, keep the same, same chair. That way, it changes every year with the chair of the board.
Well, and
That would be my, that would be my opinion.
And, and do keep in mind that unfortunately, Commissioner, you're, you only have one more as the chairman, and then Commissioner White would be the chair.
I'd say, I mean, I personally think that needs changing. That's totally up y'all. I think that's
I think that's a good idea.
No, it'd be my suggestion. You're clearly a board, you're the chair of the agenda. You're not a representative of the board, you're a commissioner.
So for purposes of the state's advisory council with the chair, that'd also be the, as whoever the current chair of the county commission, they would also be the representative of
I would say unless, unless they don't want it, because I don't, I don't want it to go to the wayside, you know.
That's right. If we, yeah, if we put it, we can put it in there, if they don't want it, that's like, I think, they don't want it. Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, we're in there, I went there.
All right.
But I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, so So we need a
Could you amend your motion to
After me.
I'm in your mic. So what, yeah, I'm here originally.
Especially maybe I'll let you.
I think we'll make a motion. Can we redo the motion? We'll just make a motion to approve that, that chairman of the board of county commissioners has the right to be the chairman of the economic development board unless he decides to, he or she decides to pass it on.
Well, and, and coming up in just a month, too, we're gonna be reporting all of the boards, right? So it's, it's
They'll change a little, a little.
And can I show, it would also be to ratify the MOU as well.
Yes, and to ratify the MOU.
Perfect.
Yeah, all right. Got a motion from Commissioner White and a second from Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion or a call to vote? All favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. As is Magnus. Item seeking Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this item dovetails with BMOU we were just talking about. So you all have seen the letter from the legislative delegation. They strongly suggested standing up this economic development committee or task force, given that the county currently doesn't have a designated economic development organization. So what's in front of you is a resolution that would go ahead and stand up such an economic development committee. The composition of that is consistent with what the delegation recommended. And again, it's one county commissioner, appointee, one member from the business community appointed by the county commission, and then also one city commissioner to be appointed by the city of Los Alamos Council. This is what the delegation recommended. You guys, though, can, you can modify that as you see fit. If you wanna add additional people, take off additional people, that is within your discretion. Just setting up this kind of vote with the delegation would suggest it on that front.
Thank you, counsel.
And to add on to the council, this will kind of be a draft committee. It's a starter committee, so that way we at least are in compliance. And then over the next couple of months, we'll be working with Carolyn Smith with the ARPC to create more of a committee that has a scope that aligns with what the county is looking for to make sure that the committee actually has guidelines of what the commission is looking at. So that form, I hope to have the, the formal committee created with additional members, because I, I know in speaking with the legislature, they, they encouraged us to have someone from a school, whether it be our, our local school representative, not necessarily someone from the school board, but someone at the school that can tell us, hey, kids are interested in this, not that. So that way, we're bringing in development, it's stuff that the kids would actually want to do instead of bringing in something they wouldn't. As well as potentially having seats for the, the local college and, or tech college, you know, something. So either way, this'll be, this is a draft committee, and then when we do our committees in December, I hope to have the actual final committee ready to appoint people to.
That sounds good. Looking at it, I think we need to add some more folks to it, because I think if you get a county commissioner, city commissioner, somebody from the school board, and then one business rep, you got four people sitting in room, and I don't know how much turned up from that. I've got, I would like to see somebody from the school as well. And I'd actually talk to sheriff about, I would like to see somebody from the sheriff's department involved in this economic activity stuff, because there are gonna be unintended consequences with any kind of growth or development like that. It's nice to have their perspective of what that change is gonna look like. So I would like to see somebody from the sheriff's department on there. If there's, I think they're willing to put somebody over there, if the board is okay with that. And I would like to see it expanded to a couple more residents and business.
I'm fine with that. I would prefer, hopefully, that person not voting part in that, but just be there as an advisory.
I think, I think that's a great, yeah, I think
Don't wanna be a voter.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, sometimes correctly reflects budgets and stuff, but anyway, they could be there to help guide, saying how these could affect positively or negatively law enforcement.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, it was suggested that we look at the Swanee County's Economic Development Team, and in their ordinance, they have a couple of law enforcement people as well as in school people. So we can look at that one as a, a committee to, to mirror ourselves after, because that, that one was strongly suggested to me.
Um, and then I've got two recommendations that I'd like to see. One of them. I think you spoke to one of them, Ashley Cowan, Cowan House, local business owner, and Caleb Stevens, new owner of San Antonio, I think.
This is, I wasn't gonna be great, but he would be on there.
I talked to Caleb today, and he, he said he'd be more than willing to, to serve on it.
I talked to Ashley as well.
Okay.
She's, and I think she's, she's on.
Yes. She says she'd love to serve.
Thank you, Ashley.
And I, I just, the one thing I wanted to caution, though, with Caleb, even though I think he would be great, is he is a realtor. So I don't know if that would be weird, but it might be good, too. It might be a good for him. Yeah.
I had a couple of deals, actually, I'd like to be on board. Well, but I, I think, I think he should be a voter, because he's gonna have a different perspective, too, in this department, I believe. This part will be a little more pro, pro growth and development, but I think Cameron is, is rooted enough in this community and understands.
Do we, for the purposes of tonight, wanna follow the delegation letter and get the initial agreement there? Yeah?
Ms. Gray, what you got?
I just wanted to mention, yeah, we used to have Economic Development Council, and on there, we always had a realtor sit on the committee in the past. And I can dig all that old information of the chairs, bump it up against Swanee County, but they made sure to have a real estate representative, a business owner, schools, all of that was understood that there was, you know, there's a lot of part of the community on the board.
What happened to that?
Yeah, whatever happened. It got dissolved after Game Changer. And then the board disbanded it, and it became unfunded. It was a public-private partnership, and it was funded by Duke Energy and Tri-County, and the board put money in it. It was a separate entity from the county in the past, but it's been probably four years now, but it's been dissolved.
Thank you for that history lesson. Um, so for the purposes being, can we can make it with those two business associates on the board?
Yeah.
I'll vote for them.
But that does give you an even number. You might wanna add one more, so you have an odd number.
I'd like to see at least one and not two more local business folks in there. Because I think the more
Well, just for our draft, our draft committee, you might want, if you're gonna add two citizens, you might wanna do one more, so that way you have five, you know, have an even number.
So they retain that in the form of a motion?
Well, so what are we, so we're gonna appoint
His sheriff.
Advisor from the sheriff's department. That, that what we're all talking about?
Yeah.
And then Taylor Stevens, Ashley Cowan, and a commissioner, a city council, and someone from the school. They want, they didn't want a school board, they want someone from the school, right?
Correct.
That we can just say That we can just say, school representative or whatever.
To be appointed, and the school president will be appointed by the school board or.
What do y'all think?
I would, I would just hand it straight to the superintendent, let him pick somebody.
But superintendent decide.
Be appointed by the school districts.
Alright, so we, I believe that was a motion from Commissioner Graham.
I'll make that into a form of a motion.
Sorry, and the, and the commissioner, the commissioner representative, just for the record, is the local sheriff.
Right, now motion. Second, second, from Commissioner White. That's what we do to call or vote.
I believe we are.
Alright, any discussion from the board, audience, or online? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye, aye, opposed, say no, good deal. Alright, item D. Lobbyist RFP discussion, Commissioner White.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it from the board to see what y'all thought about getting a lobbyist to get it, just to help us out. Just put RFP out there anyway to see what it's gonna cost, it's, if it costs two months, then I'm not involved, but I'd like to see what it's gonna cost us. Now Trey had, the car was always had one base in the corner of the knee. I don't remember what he calls, but you got some of that money, what do you, what would pay you for it?
Right, um we actually, I actually have the contract with him, I'd actually signed a contract with him for uh this next year as well, to help us get the. Remender of the core outstanding, but on capital strategy group and in.
What was that guy's name, I'm sorry.
Uh John Costella.
That's right.
Was his name, and, and Mr. Chairman, I know that you um. Had asked council about the whole uh bill tracking, about how that would affect the county. I did look around and uh the lobbyists will uh do that as well, if that's included in the soup work. So not only would they go after uh. Projects of county needs, they could also um track bills that would affect the county too.
And I mean, you got a pretty good return on that, that.
Correct, it was uh, I think, five thousand dollars and. We were saying well over uh three hundred fifty, yeah.
And, and you, I mean, we had, we got very many negotiations until we got that lobbyist, right, or you got that lobbyist?
Well, um uh court multi did, but uh definitely, they know people, they know uh folks. On the committees that we would not know, so they could get our priorities.
Avoid my soapbox on, on money and politics.
We need, we need an advocate to, to, you know, look out, you know, not, just saying, you know, so we can send them there on a mission.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be good with that, and I'd like to see some definitive what they're gonna go after for us and.
Well, I'm not sure what they're gonna go after, I'm not saying it costs us.
Yep. I'm good with that.
I don't want to spend a hundred grand, get a hundred fifty, or a bit five grand, a hundred grand, yeah.
So do we need to kind of talk about the scope of work, is it not the RFP, or, or how does that work, or do we just. They like, notice like, they're spaghetti against the wall and see what they come back with, like what they're willing to do.
Yeah, but if there's anything specific you wanted to scope, then I'll give you the time to let us know, otherwise we'll just kind of put out a general. RFP for lobbyists to advance the county's interests uh before the legislature.
Do you want bill tracking in it though, do you want them to track the bills?
I think you do it like a separate pricing, like, you know, if it's added in, you know, if that's possible, so we can say no, it's too, you know.
Do, issue consensus on the council.
Yeah, vote will be getting to just a good direction that I go ahead and try without, without taking the motion to move that forward.
Director Commissioner Graham, Commissioner White, for a second, any discussion from the board, audience, online? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye, aye, opposed, say no. I need a change order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um this is just a request to approve a change order for um one of our ship homes. Uh they needed to put in additional, uh thank you.
Out motion from Commissioner White, second from Commissioner Graham. Any discussion from the board, audience, or staff?
It is twenty nine thousand extra, twenty nine thousand one hundred, just for the record.
Alright, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye, aye, opposed, say no. Alright, that wraps up our general business, Mr. White.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um I just have uh. A couple things, just uh next month, um at the second meeting, uh the encouragement of uh commissioners as well as. Department heads, we are going to generate a uh monthly. Before the tractor revenues and the expenditures across all line items, that will be provided to you, it'll be in the same place, um the same agenda. Where the vouchers are. Also, the uh P card statements, um that activity has never made it before the boards. So uh starting in this year, uh you will also see the statements from the uh purchase card. Uh use and everything else, not even though they've already been made, so if you have any questions about that, uh let us know. We can provide the backup documentation for you, and um that'll be at the second meeting, so we have time to uh code everything. Through the first part of the month, so.
P cards, we still got nothing.
I think all the department heads have P cards, um.
Correct.
And.
And sheriff's department for uh their travel, that uh car and train.
That is something that um the clerk and I are working on, is having a better P card policy. And getting things that shouldn't be on the P card, off of the P card, and start doing purchase orders or whatever, I think.
That's all I have.
County engineers, Hunter here.
Thank you, Commissioner G, Chairman. Oh, just a few updates, we're moving on national highway design, we haven't got that survey back, but we've been crawling in ditches, looking at pipes. Getting ready for it to come back, um. A few updates on DOT grants, we sat in on uh DOT's public hearings today. We have a few projects that they're moving up to the next level, it goes to the secretary's desk, gets signed, and then gets awarded to the county. Um those projects are Waukeah Phase Three Construction, Old Lloyd Phase One and Phase Three Design. Um that construction for Waukeah is officially year twenty nine, so July twenty eight. And then the design for Phase One and Three of Old Lloyd is uh official year thirty, so July of twenty nine. Other than that, it looks like we're gonna get the projects, um just have the, have the secretary sign off on it.
You said twenty nine Old Lloyd Road for.
That's the design.
Just the design.
So, the way they like to stack these projects is, is right now we have Ashville Highway Design, which is the whole corridor. They're expecting us to apply this next round for Phase One, Two, and Three Construction or something like that. So that'll be funded prior to, you know, probably just we're at twenty eight, twenty nine. That way you have designs and construction kind of going co-ocidentally, so um just keep everything with the timeline.
They had a, uh they had a strip on Old Lloyd Road down there, caution light, they, they wouldn't be already counting that up already, would they? Traffic.
Now, aren't they doing fifty nine in, in that on the list to pave on fifty nine?
On, on the state list, be paved, I think there's a section.
Uh ninety eight and forty seven.
Right in front of.
On, on. They may be doing traffic counts, DOT might be. Yeah, that, that is a section though, that's, that's one of the sections that was awarded, good deal, that crosses.
Thanks, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Right, now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh just one quick reminder, we sent out the uh county manager evaluation forms to y'all by email a couple weeks ago. I don't think we've got any of them back as of yet though, so just a reminder, once you complete those, go ahead and send them to us, once we get all of them back. We will put that on the next available agenda. So that's all I've got, will you guys have any questions for me?
Ms. Maddie?
Um to piggyback off of Hunter, I actually also um spoke with DOT earlier thi- this morning. And um we'll be getting the RFP out for the Wolf Creek Bridge, um that's ready. And I'll prepare the RFP documents for Boston Highway, and they just have to sign off on some stuff. And once that's signed off on, we can put the RFP out for Boston Highway, so. Um those two are in the works, and um and then I, so uh our ten thousand dollar Duke Energy Grant. Um the plan was to use it on lighting at the courthouse, um parking lot, and apparently we can't use it on lighting, because it looks like. Uh Duke does, is like double dipping in their own funds, kind of, so um I need to come up with a different project. Um I came up with three, um so I just wanted y'all's input, and I don't know how much these things cost, we might have to put in a little extra, but. Um so one of them would be um a shade cover over the playground equipment, the kid, the smaller kid's side. Um at the, the park, um swings at Lamont Park, cause those swings are falling apart and um. Or not Lamont Park, but Hall Park, sorry, it's in Lamont, um. Would the uh Mike is gonna fix the swings that are down there, but if we could just put in new ones and, and include an ADA one, that might be uh worthwhile. Yeah, it'd be playground. Yeah, or um um we took out a basketball court at the um. At the rec park for the pickleball court, and so we can go ahead and put a new one at the, it would still be at the rec park, cause I don't wanna put one in. Over here until we've demoed that building, so, but uh we could put in a new one, that would be, have the lines and everything painted on there and. Be regulation height. So any, that one, the basketball, I know we'll have to put in some money, I think we'd have to put in like ten thousand or so to, to do a court. Yes, so we can, we can use some of that, so whatever, I just wanted some input on, or if you have different ideas for ten thousand. But that was, I wanted to do something that people could see and um utilize, uh that, I think that was the point of the grant anyway.
We, we still got basketball court.
I want, it doesn't have um the, the coating on it, and it doesn't have the lines painted on it, and I am not positive that the. Um the hoops are regulation height, but.
Eighty thousand, maybe we can redo that, wouldn't we?
Oh yeah, you could probably do that, I didn't think of that. Whatever y'all think is a good idea.
I'm sorry, I, I missed out on this piece, but y'all do, do what.
Instead of doing a, a different basketball court, redoing the one that's still there, um.
So, uh Shannon, did you, did you think that where it's located now is okay to keep it there?
Yes, yeah, um cause there's a parking lot right there and um. And I, I think that's a relatively good spot. Yes, sir. Does it sound like the, to redo the, the current? Okay, okay, thank you, and that is all I have.
Commissioner Hall?
Um yeah, we're, that's right now, the truth is, uh, if you met today, we are going to meet sometime soon, or are we going to spend some time?
They are meeting on Monday and um working on, on um spending funds. I'm sorry.
Isn't that, was that a problem, something like a marketing thing, marketing?
They uh started a marketing plan, um and uh uh the update, I guess, kind of with the TDC is. They're, we're working or partnering with the chamber, it's gonna be similar to what we had before, but not completely, um. Ms. Amy is gonna help me um in the way of creating the agendas, taking in applications, um just kind of some light. Um assistance, and but she wouldn't necessarily be spending money like it was before, so um that's, that's kind of. Basically, yes.
Ten, eleven thousand dollars has to be spurs.
Yes.
Appreciate that, my answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Graham.
Just two things, do, uh I like the idea of the, of recognizing the employee based on, I really like that. You know how I do my little drive around, and I did call Jembray and tell him, but I just kinda wanna say in this setting too, that. They're really doing a good job, I'm so proud, when I, you know, I do on my little Saturday afternoon. Everything looks so bold and pretty, and they're just doing a really good job, so I just wanna thank you for that.
Yeah, no, they, I've noticed that too, they're doing a good job with the bone, we'll say them, we will say to it. The weeds were very thick and tall, and a lot of trash got wedged down, and a lot of trash has been on earth in some of those moves. Of some on Salt Road I saw this morning, and that, I made a call to J P.
He's on vacation this week. I'll, I'll let him know though, I know they're trying to get back out, they're picking up trash again, now that John has a full crew. Cause it, uh William was the only one that had a full crew um of inmates, and John just had one, you won't go very far with just one.
So they got earth probably way down in there and then.
That's on South. Yeah.
And then some on Old Lloyd.
But they're doing a great job, and they're really, it really looks beautiful.
I will pass on the, the.
Commissioner White?
Uh nothing, the radio is this weekend, before they everybody out there, probably better not.
Thank you, sir. Um I just had two things. We, what we have with line striping, Ms. Maddie, I know we had talked again, there were some roads that were.
I'm, that, yes, I need the.
But then, and I know you know.
Yes, uh and I meant to respond back to her and completely forgot, um we um, I was gonna get some quotes on how much that costs to get the, the striping done. And then um.
So, tell Commissioner, so, you, Commissioner White, all, everybody right now, you got a road, you want to stripe. Bring it to the next meeting, and I was gonna go, just get, get discounts, the more you can do, and it's, it's crazy expensive, it's striped. So if you got a road, put it out there, ask.
We'll do that one, cause that'll get repainted.
The other thing, Ms. Maddie, I don't know what we can do, maybe monitor and mention this. The guardrail they put on Old Lloyd Road is, and I've gotten tons of phone calls over, somebody's gonna hit it, it's so close to the road, somebody, I talked about it. Maybe Jack. And I think somebody finally did hit it, um.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, and um going south. And it, it really, it's so close to the road, and all these big trailers we got, I mean, it's, it's gonna be bad at some point, I mean. What can we do, what, I mean, what can be done about that?
We weren't on that inspection, so I'm not exactly sure of what goes on, but a lot of times they have to move guardrails closer to the road, just because. There's not a head wall going in, and it'll just fall over effectively, so I retired there after the last meeting, it's always, it's really close to the road. Somebody hit it, I'm not surprised, you know, um we, we get up to DOT, that's about the only thing I know we do.
Can, we can't, we can't just go take it to some point and get it down, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Technically, it's yours, but, you know, DOT did pay for it.
It'd probably be upset.
So I know what you're talking about, it, it, it would be a lot better, guardrail really isn't super close, but that end section is, if they were to flare out.
That, that's, that's exactly right, I mean, cause it's almost like flared towards the road.
We ran into that in Waukeah too, and Waukeah, I'm not sure y'all seen that one too, it's, it's a lot closer to the road as well. But we made them take it up and redo it the best they could. It's still both.
And there's no scenario where DOT is gonna say, yeah, that's fine, don't put one there. Not in this morning, morning world.
They require it there, so.
Okay, alright, so maybe if, if we get somebody else hits it, maybe we can break the DOT and go.
Well, if you have, and, and we can go out and take pictures of it, send it to DOT, say, hey, it's been brought up several times.
I'll go by it tomorrow and just take a picture, send it to you.
That'll work. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Mark. That was all I had. Thanks, everybody, and can motion to adjourn?